I want to call this meeting to order. This is our regular session of our regular Blue Lake City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2023. We've had a quorum of the council, so we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask for a moment, a minute of silence for the death of Earl Eddy, our Planning Commissioner of long time and also a member of CERTS. So that'll be right after our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. There will be a proclamation about Earl listing some of his accomplishments in the town, and he was our, one of our Planning Commissioners. He passed away about 10 days ago. Okay, we have an agenda to approve. Is there anyone first from council that would like to move anything around on the agenda?
I don't have anything to move around, but I do want the council to be aware that on item 11, that, that item is where my res, that area is where my residence is. And so although I do not financially benefit from any action on that, I benefit in many other ways. So if the council feels that I need to be recused, I am totally fine. Otherwise, you know, just I wanted to throw that out to the council and get your, get all of your opinion on that.
Thank you. Thanks. I think just having the appearance of there being a conflict of interest, you probably should. No other changes from council? Anyone from audience that would like to change anything in the agenda? Okay, back to council for approval of an agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to approve the agenda as delivered. Any further discussion from council? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item eight, public comment. Oh, did I mention that there was no action to report after our closed session? That should be noted as well in the minutes. Okay, item eight, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment that is not on the agenda?
Can we see how many people want to make those so that we make sure that we're not exceeding our 15 minutes?
Okay, so we have, at this point, we have four. And I don't see any hands there.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start with Lisa.
Yeah, so we can have five people under that, three minutes.
Can we start the timing, please? Thank you.
This won't take three minutes, yeah. Related to the, this Lisa Hoover is my name, and related to the most recent Planning Commission meeting and the Powers Creek housing developments, will the city post an update to the commission's findings? What steps the city will be taking next in a general timeline, please? That's what I'd like to ask, if there'll be some update on the Powers Creek webpage regarding that. Thank you.
And just to, just to clarify, public comment time is not a back and forth time. So if you have some questions, they will be answered after all the public comment, if necessary. Okay. Lynn Glenn?
Hi, I had two, two questions. One is, I don't see anything on the agenda about law enforcement. And I believe the, our current law enforcement contract is being changed and there's going to be a lot more money that's being asked for by the Sheriff's Department, which is, I mean, a lot more money. And it's a pretty, it'll be hard for the city perhaps to come up with the money. I don't really know what the situation is. I've heard there were changes being considered with private law enforcement possibly. So I'm hoping that law enforcement is pretty important to a lot of people in the community, and it's also really important to the business community because I know there's been a lot of issues happening down in the Business Park with, there's been some crime and that kind of thing. So it's important, I think, for the city to have a good, robust law enforcement program and a good sense that, that the law is not being broken in Blue Lake. So I'm hoping that the council will consider putting that on the agenda in the future. And the second thing quickly is, I'm a little unclear as to what the policy is regarding public comment. During the public comment session, it's pretty clear, and this is made for non-agenda items, and they can't be discussed because the public doesn't know they're being discussed. And I understand that. What I don't understand is the protocol for when the public wants to discuss issues on the agenda. Is there a particular protocol? Is there a time limit? And where, what is the, where does that come from? Is that in the Brown Act? Is it in the city charter? I would just like to know what the protocol is for public discussion at city council meetings. Because I think it's really important. You are our representatives, and you don't know what we're thinking unless we're here to let people know what our, what our concerns are. So it's really important for you to know that. And then also, the other thing, it's the only opportunity really for the public to ask questions and get them answered. And I think I'd heard that all questions would not be answered anyway. A clear protocol would be really helpful, I think, for the public. There's been a lot more involvement that I've seen recently, and it'd be great if I think people knew how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I also support her comments on law enforcement.
Okay.
I do too.
Okay. All right. Other people that would like to make a public comment at this time? Thank you, Mr. Sawatsky, and then Becky. Thank you.
Kent Sawatsky, your, the supervisor's meeting was not on your agenda, so I wish to make some comments on that today. Some very positive things happened. I like to stay positive on these kinds of things a lot of times. Some people may not realize that of me. But they did form a, an ad hoc committee. And for those in the audience, just as far as clarity goes, municipal code says you can't agendize items personally if you do the certain policy. So if you have a question and it's not answered now, you might consider requesting that be put on agenda at the next meeting. In the supervisor's chamber, you can't do that, and that's not the policy. It has to go through, through the, to the members up there. So anyway, they, they formed an ad hoc committee to deal with government to government, which in other words, that would be G and G, and that would be the city of Blue Lake and the tribe strongly support that you, in fact, this is a request that you put, put that on your next agenda. I will do it in writing in a timely manner. But this is, this, we have good neighbors here, and I think we should really try and mend some fences. There seems to be a lot of animosity, and they're great partners. The other thing that was amazing was that they have developed a, a, you know, the tiny home kind of concept where the ADUs. And they went with, when they developed something that supported it and had, had some, some setup for it and how to do it, they went from 14 to 45 in one year. So I strongly suggest, and I will again probably ask to have that agendized somewhere on there, where you get together and start working on something to enable people to understand it, so we can have the same increase. I guess it might be going from one to four or something instead, but it's still a major increase. So that's a, that's a topic I think should be brought forward. And they passed their budget, congratulate them, they started theirs in April. I mentioned we were kind of starting ours tonight. So that, that's some of the things that transpired. There's always a wonderful time in there. I highly recommend if you ever have time to actually attend the meeting and watch what functions there. It gives people a bit of idea what happens in the big pond rather than the little, little lake. And it's a good time where you can liaison and speak with Billy Hansel, or you can speak with Tom Mattson, or all the people that we deal with on the county level, and I strongly recommend you do that. Thank you for my three minutes.
Thank you for your comment. Becky?
Hi. Just a few reminders. In December of 2022, a small group had asked a question. Should a city manager be able also be the city clerk? And would that not cause your checks and balances to be off within your government? So with due diligence, a small city was chosen, and I asked a question to the city manager. No names were mentioned, and they said, no, that would give one person too much authority. So after watching the video on June 22, 2021, it was mentioned that the COVID relief money would provide a new staff position, and economic development was, came up. Councilman Doherty spoke up saying that she thought they should concentrate on a city clerk position. Our city manager then comes in and says the duties are minimal. After Councilman Doherty says the clerk, city clerks are crucial to the city function, so I honestly regret dissolving that into the city manager position, and I think we should discuss it. Our city manager goes on to say, my need is for someone who can take care of these grants and projects and stuff, and the city clerk would be a great to have. And then she proceeded to say, if I could get an administrative assistant that could do clerk duties also. And then Councilman Doherty asked for a complete description. It was something that was discussed a couple of years ago, and maybe the money could have been used for that position at that time to make those checks and balances even once more within your city government. And then I went and I called three different towns, and I asked one more question. I wanted to know if they allowed city employees to sit on commissions or boards. Called Trinidad and Arcata, and the same thing came up. It's not in their municipal code, but it is not good practice and is not typically done because of possible conflicts. I called Eureka. They do have it in their municipal code under Title III, Chapter 33.002. And this is something maybe for you to think about going into the future with Blue Lake. I also have some other things on the opportunity zone, but I'm not going to go into them at this time. I'm just going to pass you each out some papers that have all the information in it. I thank you for my, thank you for that.
Thank you, Becky. Okay. We will move on to item nine.
Julie's got her hand up.
Oh.
Thank you.
Julie, the chair, the chair recognizes you.
I actually was having, yes, I was having trouble hearing, so I thought you were in my truck on blue shoes, and I can hear a lot better. And it was very nice to be able to listen to the rest of our community members. And I really want to back up on what actually was this commenting on. I was present during those meetings via Zoom. And I think it would be really nice if we could make the formal request that the reports that we were supposed to be getting during our managers' reports regarding the truck route and Powers Creek, I have requested a public comment another time. So please, like, could we have those? And I've been missed three times in a row at the end of the meeting for a new agenda item, which is fine, they're late nights, I applaud everybody for speaking up. But I really want to have a truck route update. I am very serious about having a truck route update, and so are the district committees and everybody's going to be affected by what proceeds to be the projected outline ideas for that. So please, do feel diligence on that before any more spending, spending on it, we go backwards and see. I was really caught off guard last week in the affairs, cutting a chance for kids for public comment, but I was a little highly disappointed with how our town hall ended up following. You guys know the questions that are out there. The planning commission said they could not answer for directed staff. You know, we were given another bio from the past that really is just reiterating over and over. And so please, with some due diligence, let's have some clean packets, let's have some clean transparency, and please fill all the recordings up that were never allowed because of how council conducted themselves. Please, over the right of the public, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And one more.
Hi, I was just going to piggyback on what some others have already said. This is just a state, a sentence out of our, sorry, City of Blue Lake General Plan. And it is on page 12, under Utilities and Services. The goal is to provide the basic city services in such a way as to assure a pleasant living and work environment in Blue Lake. Policies, number one listed is, the city shall make provisions of the following services a priority. First listed, listed is police protection. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Okay. I don't see anyone else up there on Zoom. We will move on then to item nine, Public Safety Commission Leash Law Recommendation. The city council requested that the Blue Lake Public Safety Commission research options for the development of a leash law. The commission considered the request and formed an ad hoc committee to research options and implications. At the last Public Safety Commission meeting, the ad hoc committee presented their findings, and the commission discussed the issue and formulated a recommendation for presentation to the city council. Jason Cruz, thank you for being here. Chair of the Public Safety Commission will present the commission's recommendation, and will be available to answer questions from the council.
Okay, thank you. So the results of the ad hoc commission or committee was, they split up into two groups, and they were to look at leash laws existing in the communities around us. So they looked at Trinidad, McKinleville, Arcata, and Ferndale, I believe. They did not make contact with anybody in Ferndale in the timeframe that we had. But Arcata does have a lot of language and definitions on this. And, and an existing leash law in place, as, as does Ferndale. Ferndale's leash law basically, and the gist of it says that a leash shall not exceed more than eight feet and in, in anywhere within city limits except in the owner's yard. So Trinidad also has a leash law in place, and they have just reinforced it here in, on March. And if we were to look at a model to go off of, I think Trinidad would, their plan that's in place now would really fit Blue Lake with some minor modifications. But at this time, it's the recommendation of this Public Safety Commission to formulate a leash law into the city code.
Could we hear more about the Trinidad?
Um, I don't know if I have it printed, I didn't print it out. They basically sent a letter out to the community and saying that based on recent events with dog attacks, that we are now enforcing a leash law within city limits. They excluded some areas. And then they're also allowing, as, well, they're, they're engaged in a, I guess, a pilot program with the, their private security company. So they're allowing a private security company to help enforce as part of their enforcement. But I don't, I didn't bring that with me right now. They, I could, I could provide it to the council. Believe I did. All right, here it is, right here. So I'll read it out to you. This is March 30, 2023. So, Dear city residents and water customers, due to the recent dog attacks, the city is reinforcing that all dogs must be on a leash in the city. The city is posting signs and, for the public, sending letters to residents and posting signage in STRs to remind people of the leash law. We expect landlords to make sure that their tenants are aware of the, aware of and abide by the law. If anyone in the city witnesses bad behavior by dogs, it should be reported to the city offices. In the case of an attack, call 911. All dogs must be licensed by the owners and tenants of the city, and licensing can be done at town hall. Leash law will be enforced and its subjects, will be subject to fines ranging from $100 to $500. In addition to our contract with the sheriff, we are adding services with Pacific Coast Security and the Community Ambassador Program, which can assist in informing the public, reporting incidents, and enforcing our leash laws. Dogs off premises must be under the control of the owner or other responsible person, either by leash, cord, chain, or physical restraint. The city loves dogs but does not want any dog attacks. So we must make all dogs, large and small, enter owners and other members of the public feel safe. We must allow all residents and visitors to feel safe and enjoy Trinidad without feeling threatened by loose dogs. It is under, is unfair when some people are afraid to walk in their own town to the beach or to the beach. Dogs are permitted off-leash at all Trinidad State, at Trinidad State Beach. Dogs are permitted off-leash under complete voice control of their owners at all times at county beaches, as posted per Clown Beach and Moonstone Beach County Parks Access Management Master Plan. So that was it.
And that was the statement that, that was the statement from the Trinidad City Council?
Correct.
To the city members.
Yeah, city members. Okay.
It feels, it's pretty simple. I mean, I did get a lot of feedback from people saying that they would like to exclude the levees, and that's up, you know, to the council, but, and, and I guess the dog park as well, but.
See, I, I wouldn't want to exclude the levees just because of the fact that some people like to walk their dog that might be reactionary to another dog to run up to them, and that's just going to cause more problems.
And that's, I guess that's all I had, if there's any more questions, but.
Does council have any more questions?
Would you be willing to get that to us, that, that writing that you just read?
Um, yeah, I could do that.
Could you do that?
I mean, I could leave this copy with somebody if you want to make photocopies.
Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you.
Because we can use that as a template.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you so much, and thank you for all your work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay. It is the pleasure of the council. At this point, it looks like.
So that sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, to start, have a leash law. Can we say maybe at the river that they can go off leash?
That's not her view.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Then we can.
But I do agree with your levy assessment because.
It's, because it's still under our stuff, and it would be a liability to be like, oh, it's off-leash. I mean, not necessarily liability to us, but it's just dangerous because not, we have visitors here that don't know everything about every dog and family.
Mandy, would this be an amendment to our ordinance, or would this have to be a new ordinance?
No, I think we could just amend your municipal code. You have an animal and dog ordinance, and I think it's a pretty easy fix.
Add the eight foot.
I like the eight foot idea from Ferndale, too. Just because retractable leashes are the bane of most people.
Yeah, eight feet seems like a long distance anyway, so, yeah. I think we'll have some public comment and then come back to council for further direction. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this matter? The chair recognizes Alex Ricker.
Thank you. I do not believe the east levy is under the city's jurisdiction. I believe that is totally under the Corps of Engineers. I also believe the west levy is under the city's jurisdiction, but the east levy, I do not believe. I think the city limits are there at the gate, which would have to be checked. I, Blue Lake's been under, I've walked dogs in this town for over 40 years. I've never had a problem. I've had more problems with dogs on leashes than off-leashes. Dogs on leashes are restrained. They are not acting as, dogs are acting as protectors of the human. And that's where I see most dogs off-leashes, if they are raised correctly, avoid that confrontation. They back off. I would also ask that at least until the Powers Creek project is completed, for their residents there, that that walkway, pathway from the Hardin Bridge down there out to the path behind Power Plant be also exempt. That is a wonderful play area for dogs. If anyone has walked their dog out there, the dogs, and I've seen four or five dogs having a frolic out there. It's wonderful. And as usual, the innocent are being punished for the behavior of the few non-innocents. And I always think that is a dangerous path to walk down. I think a way to protect the innocents and their freedoms is more important than one incident that occurs. I believe humans who have violent dogs should be held accountable, and the dogs should be put down. But that is the humans' fault, not the dogs'. I know it's a difficult path to walk on, but I've never had a problem here. And I've had big dogs and small dogs, and they're on leash and off, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. The chair recognizes Stacia.
Can I, can I please ask folks that want to comment to come to the podium? Because we are recording, and you're, you can't be heard in the recording if you're not at the podium.
I'm sure we heard Alex.
I agree, I would agree with Alex on this one. I've had dogs for years and walked on the levees. And I think that in town, it's a great idea to have a leash law, but out on the levees, I don't. If somebody has voice control over their dog. A lot of times you walk all the way down at the end of the levy, and Henshaw Flathead has loose dogs down there, and you do have to be concerned about that. There's no people attached to them. But I think if there's people attached to their dog and they have voice command, that they should be allowed to run on the levees and the open area that you were talking about, too. Because they do, they have fun. And some dogs get really weird on leashes. But in town, I totally agree. Keep them on leashes. So thanks.
For the safety of the dog in town.
Thank you for your comment. The chair recognizes Angela Deere.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to say that I walk down there on the levy quite often, and there's been several incidents. One time I was walking and my dog was on a leash, and another dog came up to my dog and was in my dog's face. And I don't think that's fair for my dog to have to have somebody in their space. Like, he wanted to bite him because he was, you know, he was right in his face, so that wasn't cool. And then another time I was walking down there, a lady had three dogs, and I think she had a kid. So none of them were on leashes. And there's no way that you can control dogs with the voice when there are three of them, I don't believe, unless you're like a dog whisperer. But I, I walk down there all the time. I see people with many dogs, so, on the levy. So it, it makes me nervous for my dogs and for myself, so I appreciate you, oh, he left, you know, saying that he want a leash law in town, but also on the levy. I'd like that. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Dave Nakamura.
Couple things. One is, for the first time ever in this room, I agree with Alex Ricker. No, I really agree with everything Alex said. I, I lived here for over 30 years, and we walk our dogs almost every day out of the levees or up by the hatch, and we've never, ever had a problem. I think the issue in town is a whole different thing, especially when you've got pedestrians, you've got kids, you've got bikes, you've got dogs on leashes. That, that creates the dynamic. It's not out on, you know, away from town, out in the wilderness, I guess. So I agree with Alex.
Some of us know the history of this. It's very interesting.
I couldn't resist.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave. It's all settled my mind. The chair recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
Generally, the interaction and the quantity of dogs is greatly increasing in Blue Lake. A lot of it was because of COVID. A lot of people found that they were, had something they wanted to interact with. And the other thing we're having is we're having literally hundreds of people down on the levy down there who are strangers coming to our town who don't understand the dog thing. So it's unfortunate, but that's part of when things change. I strongly support the leash law. I did want to give a little clarity, and I, I could be incorrect, I can stand corrected. But the whole levy is under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineer. The portion that is on the other side of the bridge up there is responsibility of the county to maintain. The one on this side within our area is our responsibility to maintain. And I've talked to Tom Mattson. He's considering going ahead and doing what would be necessary to maintain that in a manner where the levy wouldn't fail. So I decided to give you a little information on that one. I, I gave you a paper a little bit before, and the sheriff concurred with a certain comment here. And then enable the city of Blue Lake to minimize its liability for animal control. The city should consider the contract with Humboldt County Animal Shelter for additional services as throughout the rest of the county. And, and again, this is, this is something of major importance. I'm all about risk management. And if, if you want to minimize and basically take and put the liability onto somebody else who are experts to do your animal control here to, unlike, I guess Trinidad may be not doing that, they have this other forestry. But we don't have that. I don't see anything in the works. I haven't had anything brought before you folks regarding that particular topic. And so I strongly, strongly suggest that you follow the recommendation of the sheriff regarding that. And the leash law, I think, is imperative for you to do your due diligence. I believe we have a dog park and those kind of places. Maybe there's certain areas where people would be interested in signing a disclaimer that should their dog be attacked by another dog, that they won't have any kind of recourse with the city. Or should their dog attack another dog, they wouldn't have recourse. The city does have an obligation to provide both sheriff's services and to provide a service that takes care of the health, safety, and welfare of its individuals within the city limits and anything within their jurisdiction. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other hands, there's a hand on the Zoom. And then Lynn.
I'm assuming that would be me. I feel my hand up. This is Julie Christie again. And I just want to thank you for allowing more public comment, keeping this going forward with conversation. It's really important. So I'm going to sound a little rhetorical with my comments. But hopefully commissioners for public safety have taken advantage of recordings since we've been on this several agenda times, reflecting back on those public comments prior review. But again, you know, keeping in mind that the city is responsible for their district. So, you know, where Pappy's Trail begins and the bridge starts, you know, understanding that town people, that that's out of their jurisdiction. I'm going to go back to within city limits that I just highly suggest, yes, a leash law. I know you cannot enforce it realistically in a manner that is going to affect anybody with daily activities as is now. But again, it is going to give any kind of other party protection in court. Literally last week, you guys, I had a dog come down here, ripped through my sheep on a hottest day. I'm scrambling to save them, and then it goes after my horses. This stuff happened. And I just, I, I, other people need protection. I'm in county on the side of the bridge, I understand that. Next thing is just getting some signage on the property of the city. That's very important. And allowing, you know, the other property owners that you guys are basically allowing access on to, with Lezian Pepe's and Marises. You know, those guys should be aware of some support. Those private property owners need to have insurance for that. It is their liability. They are not covered if somebody wants to come back on them and injure or hurt on their property. I hope everybody is conscious of that and respectful and proactive in supporting it. And again, we need to reflect back to the community that in this point in time, your best procedure is to call 911 and to really just let people know so that the quickest response can be available for them. Okay, so thank you very much for continuing this. It's very important for our community.
Thank you for your comment. Chair recognizes Lynn Glenn.
Thank you. Two comments. I'm wondering how this will be enforced. Do you have, I don't know how the ordinance reads, but that would be good to know, I think, in terms of effectiveness. Second thing is, the reason this came before you is because there was an attack on a dog in a person's yard. And really, a leash law would not really be effective to deal with that. And then you probably, many of you are aware that there was a serious, serious attack across in the post office, and the person was badly, badly injured. Again, the leash law would not have helped, the two dogs jumping the fence and attacking a person just walking down the sidewalk. So this is not the only issue in terms of public safety and dogs here in Blue Lake. I know the city, the Public Safety Commission was directed only to consider a leash law. But I think you need, maybe perhaps need to go further and look at your ordinance to see if there's anything you can do to protect our citizens against serious attacks like that. And I don't know what the answer is, but, but I think this is not going to solve the problem that was brought before you.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Lynn.
Hi, I want to thank Lynn because she's been a big support. And the dog, and she was brought up in December because of the attack on my dog on my property. And although I, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into the leash law, it was not my concern. I had to wait three days to get help from animal control after the attack. Getting a quick response is what I was working towards. Now that we do have a leash law, we have no animal control to back it. So I think looking at that opportunity to have animal control to help enforce our leash law kind of makes sense. But, and, and I know this is a difficult subject, but establishing a violent dog, it doesn't have to be the same as a vicious dog. But in this situation where a dog came, caused me thousands of dollars of damage on my property, I think that that should be enough to one-time certify that dog not, not welcome to be roaming our streets. So if we could, I don't know, I'm really happy and I'm content to let this die down for a bit. And I think this has been seven months, nonstop of this. But maybe we can look at getting something in the books for def- defining or definition of a vicious dog or a violent dog that has done one attack, that has resulted in great injury and loss of finances. And to protect us, because especially if we bring people from out of town, there's a good chance it will be one attack, and then they'll be back, you know, down south or on vacation. So I think we can just look at that a little bit more and another aspect that still maybe deserves attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no other comments, back to counsel. What is the pleasure of the counsel? Mandy, I had a couple of questions. Now, it sounds like Trinidad has a, a fine of a hundred, a hundred and, or five hundred dollars. And so who's responsible for levying that fine on the individual? And how does, do you know how that works?
Right, so what I'm assuming Trinidad is doing is updating their municipal code. And with that update will probably come a new fine structure. And then their code is going to identify what, what triggers each level of, of fine. So it, up to five hundred could be because of multiple violations or, I'm, I'm not really sure what their structure is, but I would assume that that's, that's what they're looking at. So just like any of your other penalties in your municipal code. And then you would have the sheriff that would be enforcing that. Because under our sheriff contract, they are required to enforce our municipal code.
So would that be part of the amendment to our ordinance then, would also be the fine?
Yeah, you would need to have those penalties identified.
And I'm not sure if there's anything we can really do about the height of people's fences if they have dogs. I know that there's a height, there was a height limit of six feet around the back and sides of property. And I think there was no higher than four feet in the front. And I've noticed in town that a lot of people have, have violated that law pretty much because they have over six feet fences in the front. But I don't see any way that we can mandate that with a, with an animal.
I think what you're, I think what you have and what you already have is you have a mechanism for someone to, to go after someone through a civil process. So you're, it's, it's like I said, it equates like, say you have a purgatory at your house. It's a civil, it's a civil process that you would go to. It's a criminal act, the, the, being able to recoup for damages is a civil process. So you would have to go through a process to, you know, there, one side is, you know, the sheriff or law enforcement making an arrest. If you have damages, you can go after it on, from a civil standpoint. So you could go to small claims, or if it was more substantial than that, you could go through a, a different process. You, you have that now. And I think Julie's right, it's, it's something that's going to be very hard to enforce. It's something that we probably don't have the capacity to enforce regularly. But in the event that something does happen, the individual has that, that level of protection under your code to show that there was a violation that took place. So if a dog is off-leash, it damages, it attacks another dog, it attacks a human, you know, you have those physical damages. The, the municipal code gives you another layer of, of legal remedy under the city's code. You already have, you're going to have legal remedies available to you under the civil code as well. So you have multiple layers of protection. It really comes down to enforcement capacity. So it's, I, I don't think, I think at this point, you've had lots of commentary about leashes and their applicability. And it's going to be somewhat similar to what you currently have. It's like I said, it's just another layer, layer of ability to, to go after someone for damages.
Go ahead, Christopher.
If we could add anything to this, I would like to find out what our purview is as what was brought up by community comment, like what we actually do control, like what is our boundaries? And then, as Julie noted, signage would be great. Like, if we do have control over one of the leadys signs there, both ends of the, of the trails and probably our community center out there, a few different places. And then, of course, that notice is all, I, I just, that's all. I think that's all good things we should do.
And then I think the issue that we've heard, but both pro and con, is whether the dog should be on the leash on our levy, assuming that we do have.
That we do have purview.
Yeah, we do have control over the levy. I'm leaning more towards wanting to see a leash law even on the levy. As a bicyclist, I've encountered dogs, and usually the person has to hold the dog back while my bike goes by. And if they hadn't done that, I know what would have happened. But that's how I'm leaning. I think dog parks definitely should be exempt. It's fairly obvious that we should have them be able to roam freely in a, in a dog park. So, any other counsel ideas on this?
Well, I'm more in favor of dogs roaming free, honestly. Once they're out of the city, I have a dog. I always leash her when I'm in, right in town. But when, after I cross the bridge, the Powers Creek, I let her run. You know, it's just, she's, but she's under voice command. She listens, so, you know, and she's not violent, she's never hurt anybody. So I let her run free, and I let her run free on the levy. You know, I pick up her poop, you know, I follow her. I don't just let her run away.
Thank you for being a response.
I have my eye on her. I'm watching her. I'm responsible, you know. But I throw the ball for her out there. I even throw the ball for her over at, by the horse arena, and even at the little city park. And she runs and chases it and comes back, you know. So, but I do believe that I leash her for her safety around the automobiles here, mostly. Because she does listen really well. But the streets, you know, they're small, there's a lot of cars. So, yeah, I, I'm in more in favor of allowing them off-leash outside of town personally. So, but that's, I, I may not win this argument. I just want everybody to know where I stand.
I agree with you on that, and I agree with Alex, too. You know, we're, we're damning the few to, or damning the many for just a few. And, but I also agree that just because your dog is a great dog, or someone might be having a rescue dog that does not like other dogs.
Yeah.
Good around kids and people, but will kill anything that comes near it.
Right.
What if your dog ran up to one of those dogs?
Well, anytime I see somebody, I immediately call her.
Yeah, but not everybody has.
And then I hold her and I ask them, like, what's going on with your dog? Your dog okay? We're okay? Because I've noticed really, most dogs, they just want to play.
Yeah.
That's what they want.
But not every dog, or not every dog owner has that sense of mind.
Yeah, and she listens. I mean, she's really good. So if she just ran off, you know, that would be difficult.
Yeah.
I would like to just express the opinion that I'm in favor of the leash law. And I think that to try to carve out places where it doesn't apply is going to be problematic. You know, as far as enforcement goes, we're gonna, that's kind of going to be another bridge that we cross at a later time because we can't solve that problem here tonight. But I, I definitely feel like it's problematic. And to carve out certain places, it would be nice for everybody to feel safe walking everywhere in town. And if we're going to say that dogs can be loose here and dogs can be loose there, then there's always going to be folks that are being approached by loose dogs that are not comfortable with that. And there's always going to be an opportunity, like, say, on the levy, you're riding your bike, you're going a little fast. Sometimes, you know, dogs are surprised by a fast-moving bike, and they will nip. You know, even, even somebody's good, sweet, wonderful family pet might react badly to being approached on a bicycle. So I, I support the leash law. And, and I do not support carving out any areas where it doesn't apply.
I definitely had a dog that hated bicycles.
There is a dog park, though. You agree that?
Oh, I don't care about the dog park. That's fenced. It doesn't matter. The dog park is a whole different thing.
Well, that's part of the city, and that's why we want to make sure that.
That's the point of a dog park is that they're off-leash, right?
But we still may need to, to carve that out, as you call it.
What, the levy, is that our enforcement? I, I, Army Corps of Engineer, like. So, I mean, I think that would be the only concern with, if, you know, we, we, if, if we direct staff to generate a leash law ordinance, what would, you know, would it be, is it enforceable for us to do that on both sides of the levy, I suppose? It was a question I would have.
It definitely, any side of the levy is not in our jurisdiction.
Yeah, no.
The west side is kind of a combined jurisdiction between the city and the county. We work with the county for maintenance of that levy. They maintain the gate. So there is some quasi-jurisdictional issues that we would have to just, you know, make sure that everyone's agreeable as far as enforcement.
Okay.
So that's not, I, I'm honestly not completely a hundred percent sure on how that jurisdiction works on that one strip.
Okay, that would be, yeah, I, I mean, that would be, I think, a direction I would like to take is determine that and then, you know, use that as part of the language for a leash law.
Yeah, make sure that the language states, because I don't think a lot of people understand that that is under our area of enforcement. So when we do send out our notice, it should be, the area should be included in our notice like Trinidad's was.
So it sounds like we need to establish that we have jurisdiction over the levy. And then it sounds like we're directing staff to proceed with a leash law ordinance.
And signage.
And signage. And signage.
I think we should have Arts and Heritage Commission have a context so you can.
Beautiful signage. Was that a motion? If that was a motion, I'll second it.
Well, we have, yeah, we could do it by motion, or we could just.
Or do we just direct?
We can direct the Arts and Heritage.
No, no, not that. Do we, do we direct you, or?
You know, I think it would be cleaner for you to have a motion, just because it is changed to your code. It's a, it's a.
Yeah, it's pretty important.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we need a motion to proceed, to direct staff to proceed with a leash law in our municipal code.
Do we need to be more specific? I would make a motion then to direct staff to proceed to draft a leash law and do that well, and consider the, the issues of, of jurisdiction on the, on the west levy in, in the process of doing that. That's my motion.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Elizabeth, I'm sorry, by Lee Scipani, I'm sorry. Seconded by Christopher Edgar. Seconded by Christopher Edgar. Is there any further discussion from council?
Does that include signage?
Well, I.
Or is that a separate issue?
That's not the law.
Okay, the leash law is one thing, okay? Good, okay.
Signage is just a detail.
General business.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Item 10 is resolution number 1220. Fiscal year 2022, 2023. Budget amendment.
Oh, this is you.
The budget amendment was given to us at the last meeting, and it's now our time to pass it. Did you need to take a break? Okay, all right. Scott, did you have anything further to add to the budget amendment item from last week?
There was just, there was a couple changes, um, on page two. The planning department had some costs in it that needed to be moved down to the capital department, um, related to the truck route study, so, um, that's reflected in the budget amendment. And then, um, the original estimate on the law enforcement covered by Fund 33, the supplemental law enforcement fund.
What page is that on?
Two.
Two.
Thank you.
That amount increased, I think it was about 3,000 before, and it moved up to, to 19,000. So those are the only changes from the previous presentation.
Oh, law enforcement, Department 260, okay. So the city accountant has provided a budget amendment for fiscal year 2223. This amendment was presented last meeting, special meeting we had, and the budget amendment reflects actual revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2223. So we need to pass this with a resolution which states that the city of Blue Lake adopting a budget amendment for the fiscal year and finding the budget to be within the appropriations limit required by Article such and such of the California Constitution. So we do have a resolution that will be signed by the mayor to get our budget amendments and our finances in, in shape from last year.
I make a motion as read by Mayor Adeline Jones.
I'll second.
Motion by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Elise Scifani to pass Resolution 1220, have the mayor sign it. A resolution, City Council of City of Blue Lake adopting a budget amendment for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023. Any further discussion from council? We haven't had any input from public.
Oh.
Seeing no hands, we'll come back to council for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Someone wanna text me when you guys start talking about Resolution 11?
Okay, let it be noted that councilperson Angela Schull has recused herself on item 11. So item 11 is our 1221 SB 1 funding. Staff report on this?
So SB 1 is our, um, it's a supplemental road assessment, it's a road tax. And the city is projected to receive about $29,000 this year. It's a pretty small amount, but since we receive only a very small amount of road funding, it does really help us to kind of stretch our road budget. We usually use it to do, uh, pothole repairs, sometimes we do striking. We've, um, used it to do, um, traffic calming installations, signage replacement. This year, we are recommending the use of these funds for, um, a larger paving project up in the Northfield Terrace section of town. Uh, right now, we have a lot of work being done, uh, around the community because of the PG&E project, and Northfield Terrace has been a, um, is a subdivision that has some pretty degraded road infrastructure. And it's been, um, a real concern of the cities on how we were going to be able to afford to make those improvements. With the level of work that PG&E did up there, because it is a very densely populated area, there were a lot of gas line replacements that took place, um, so kind of working in our favor is the fact that PG&E pretty much tore up the roads. Uh, and they're gonna have to come back and do a lot of paving. So we would like to utilize the amount of funding that we receive under SB 1 to leverage that project to get, um, additional paving, to help us, um, bring that road up to a more manageable state. So this is probably the only opportunity we're gonna have, um, to have this level of paving taking place. We can leverage the mobilization and the cost of, um, the materials already being on site and the labor being on site. Um, so basically, um, we're gonna get a lot more out of our 29,000 than we ever would have. So we're recommending that the, uh, funding be allocated to that project, and SB 1 requires that we pass a resolution that identifies project locations. Um, it is, we do have the capacity to move the, move projects around as the need arises, uh, but because our amounts are so small, we usually use them up, um, pretty timely, so.
Does that project have some other component of drainage management over there?
Um, it's got a huge amount of drainage issues. Um, those are well beyond our capacity to deal with under this project, um, but it has been identified for future opportunities if there is funding available. So we've looked at opportunities to complete streets, um, how, different cow trans projects, um, we work routinely with the county, um, looking at safety improvements, trying to look at any which way we can, um, to try to bring a project to that area. There's a few projects that are sort of in the works. Uh, I think we could probably do some additional repairs if we could get a larger capital project to, um, do some repairs and maintenance for failing, uh, water and wastewater lines, um, that we would leverage some additional paving, um, but at this time, we don't have any funds identified.
All right, seems pretty straightforward. What is the pleasure of the council? I can open up to public at this point? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Chair recognizes Mr. Sawatsky. And also, I see a hand, so I see that.
For those of us who, who know the area, this has been a problem area, as, as mentioned, we've been your city manager for a long time. Possibly a fix is some form of a French drain even on the other side of the main road over there, which is, uh, something that could be done to alleviate the problem. You gotta get the moisture out of there eventually, uh, big project. I do have a question, and I continue, and I'll, I'll do a, a public records request for your balance sheet, because during this kind of time, it'd be interesting, and maybe you would be asking your city manager, are there any other funds, reserves, or anything also that would be able to be used for this kind of project? Um, that's why your, your assets and liabilities would show you have a fund reserve or something. I was under some impression that at, at an HCOG meeting, there was a graph there that showed the city had quite a few funds compared to other cities. Just be nice for you folks to know, possibly if you had other funds or things of that nature, you might wish to be combining those to other parts of the city, because, like, was brought forward by, uh, your city manager, there are certain sections down, like, uh, down by the logger bar where you have a whole large section of paving, and then you have a short little area in between them, and those areas, for very little money, possibly could be sealed up. Uh, roadways, as anybody who deals with construction knows, your, your weakest point is where water infiltrates into the, in, under the paving. You get alligator, and you get underneath there, and it go underneath the rest of your road, and you will waste your time by not having a total seal on the whole road. It's just a, it goes to the weakest point, and then basically it liquefies underneath the road and, and deteriorates the road from, from around that area. So it's just very wise to see and make these projects, why, so I'll support the project you're doing, but you may wish to also consider during this time, any other funds you might have to expend in the same manner. Thank you, you speak.
Thank you for your comments. Julie?
Thank you for noticing my hand. Um, I, I'm, I'm just, um, trying to clarify, um, our funding situation on the roads, because back in March, HCOG had a very thorough, um, presentation that, um, was outlining all, and I'm, I'm working right now, you guys, I have stuff saved, but it was very explicit to our funding, we had grants throughout county and cities, and we were brought up numerous times as an example of quite a bit of fundage and, and, and grants. And, and I know, um, you know, our staff is more understandable about where they're going and what's being used for, um, but we were pointed out pretty clearly in county, um, as one of the best cities, literally, for our funding. And our, I'm concerned that, again, like, the truck route needs to be brought up, um, you know, our funding's going towards that, where are these, where's this money kind of going towards? Because as far as county's concerned, with their review, we're looking pretty good. So if we could have some clarification on that, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And just to let everyone know that, you know, our city manager's available for any questions that you might have on any projects that go on in the city and, um, concerning our budget.
If you want, I could quickly clarify that, because that's come up twice, and I'll give you more information.
Sure, go ahead.
So the city doesn't have discretionary road funding. What we do have are a couple of road projects that are fairly substantial. We have the truck route project that we've been working on, uh, for a few years now, and that was funded, uh, for the preliminary design and engineering, um, at about, something like 300 and, 300 plus thousand dollars, and we're coming towards the tail end of that, and we have been allocated money through the CTC, um, which is through the state, uh, 1.6 million dollars to go to construction for that project. So although it looks like the city has, uh, road funding, they're very specific to specific projects. So we don't have discretionary road funding, we make a very small amount of, um, SB 1 funding and some other small transit road tax monies, um, or gas tax monies that go more for, like, general maintenance, and which really comes down to pothole repair, road striping, signage, and some of the more basic maintenance operations.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, um, Jean Lynch? Excuse me, the chair recognizes Jean Lynch.
I was looking today at, um, the state of California and some funding, um, and I'm not real clear, uh, exactly what to call it, but the amount was 160,000 dollars that had been allocated to the city of Blue Lake under a grant, and I was wondering if, uh, and at, at some point, um, for reporting what is available in the funding in the city, if it might be just for clarification and for, uh, uh, the citizens of Blue Lake to have reports of grants that have been procured by the city, um, and what areas of the city they are going to be applied to in the future, maybe we could have that report.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments? The chair recognizes Marty. No.
Are we going to talk about Acacia Street and Park? Is that the area that's going to get fixed?
Yes, yes, it is. Okay, back to council for possible action. Would you like to pass this resolution, 1221?
I move that we pass Resolution 1221, SB 1 project list.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Christopher Edgar to pass Resolution number 1221, SB 1 funding. Any further discussion from council? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thanks, Chris. Okay, we are now on item 12, fiscal year 2023, 2024, draft budget presentation and adoption, um, with a resolution 1222, budget adoption. I guess we can have our accountant weigh in now.
So, in the budget packet, I, I wanted to focus on page 18, which is our budget summary by fund. Kind of gives us a, a snapshot of what's planned for the fiscal year. So our first section of funds are the general funds. Got the general fund, the Powers Creek District Fund, and the city's CDVG Non-Program Income Fund. So the general fund, um, total revenues and transfers in about 1.1 million, total expenditures and transfers out about 1.1 million, for roughly about 100,000 dollar excess. The Powers Creek Fund, um, revenues and transfers in about 600,000, with total expenditures and transfers out of about 595,000, roughly a, a 10,000 dollar excess. The Loan Program Fund, total revenues and transfers in about 24,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 24,000, or actually at zero for an excess of 24,000. Next, we move into the Special Revenue Funds. So, um, these are gonna be, um, your grant funds that are earmarked for specific purposes, or, um, gas tax funds that are earmarked for street repairs. So first, we have the American Rescue Plan, um, fund. There's no revenues, they've been received in advance in the prior year, and we have, um, total expenditures and transfers out at about 100,000, and that will basically spend out those, those funds. Uh, next, we have the State Per Capita Program Fund, total revenues and transfers in at about 175,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 30,000. And with those 30,000 of expenditures, that will spend those funds out by the end of the fiscal year. Next, we have the Highway Users Tax Fund. Um, we've got total revenues and transfers in at about 68,000, with total expenditures and transfers out of about 68,000. Moving to page 19, we've got the TDA Street Fund, total revenues and transfers in about 22,000, and total expenditures and transfers out about 22,000. The TDA Purchase Transportation Fund, which is your, funding your, your transit services, total revenues and transfers in about 32,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 32,000. Next, we have the, um, Solid Waste Reduction and Recycling Fund, total revenues and transfers in at about 13,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 39,000. Next, we have the Supplemental Law Enforcement Fund, total revenues and transfers in about 157,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 146,000, which is reflective of your current contract amount. So depending on how that all plays out, um, that number could change in the future. Next, we have the Regional Surface Transportation Fund, total revenues and transfers in at about 11,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 11,000. Next, we have the CDVG Program Income Holding Fund, total revenues and transfers in at about 21,000, with total expenditures and transfers out at about 21,000. Next, we have the CDVG Program Income Fund, total revenues and transfers in at about 6,500, and total expenditures and transfers out at 140,000. Moving to page 20, we've got the.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Yeah, what do we do about that 133 deficit?
Yeah, what do we do about that 133 deficit? Is that just because of the time when this is all taking place?
So there's a project. So the CDVG Program Income Fund had accumulated coming into this next fiscal year a fund balance of about 400,000. And so Mandy was able to get a library improvement project funded with those funds.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And those funds are really restricted. We've had a lot of trouble because of the city's demographics. We don't qualify a lot for CDVG, some of the thresholds for spending those dollars. It's gotten so limited that the only project that we have that actually would qualify were the library improvements because it's a facility that's managed by the county. And the county meets the income threshold. And so because it's a, it meets a larger demographic usage, we were able to qualify for the improvement. So we'll be improving. If you've noticed, the walkway is in terrible condition. We'll be improving that walkway, making it 88, more 88 accessible. Improving the parking area and just some of the accessibility issues inside the library itself.
So our next group of funds are the water funds. So the Water Operating Fund, total revenues and transfers in at about 600,000 and total expenditures and transfers out at about 584,000. Next, we have the Water Connection Fee Fund. We've got total revenues and transfers in at about 14,000 with zero for total expenditures and transfers out. Next, the Water Capital Repair and Replacement Reserve Fund. We've got total revenues and transfers in at less than 500 dollars with no planned expenditures. Finally, for the water funds, we have the Water Turbidity Reduction Facility Reserve Fund. We've got total revenues and transfers in at about 35,000 with total expenditures and transfers out at about 13,000. The final group of, or the next group of funds is going to be the sewer funds. So we've got the Sewer Operating Fund. Total revenues and transfers in at about 528,000 with total expenditures and transfers out at about 486,000. Next, we have the Sewer Connection Fee Fund. Total revenues and transfers in at about 16,000 and total expenditures and transfers out of zero. Next, we have the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund, which we have total revenues and transfers in at about 27,000 with total expenditures and transfers out at this point, zero. And as some of the capital project funds come before council to be discussed and approved, you know, budget amendments will be made to spend some of the capital reserve funds.
And if we could stop at this point. Now, the water connection fee and the sewer connection fee, those are the ones that we've been thinking about possibly reimbursing people that have been living in the city for a long time? Is that where that would come out of?
No, that's the deposits.
Yeah.
No, the cap, these are connection fees that are associated when like a new project comes online. Those connection fees are paid.
Okay.
But there is an opportunity to utilize these funds for capital improvements. So we are looking at structuring some larger capital improvement projects in the next year or two.
Oh, that's good.
That these funds could be leveraged to be able to bring in some more grant resources.
Okay.
And I think the intent of those fees were to increase capacity. So we need to make sure that the use of the funds actually meets the intention of what those funds are derived from.
Okay, thank you.
So then on page 21, we've got the final fund, which is like a dental and vision trust fund. Total revenues and transfers in at about 8,000 with total expenditures and transfers out at about 7,300. So that kind of concludes the review of the budget summary by fund. And unless there's any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions from council concerning our budget?
I have some questions. I did meet with Scott yesterday and went over the budget. And he was able to answer a lot of questions for me. There's a few items in the budget that I'd like to understand better. And... There's a lot of pages, so... As far as, on page 24, general government wages and salaries. I just, we have a wage, a wage chart attachment B of the resolution. So I'm curious if, this chart appears to me to be the same chart that we approved in February. And so my question is, do employees get bumped up a step every year just because of time in the position? Or does this, does the, do the figures on this chart change very often?
So it depends. Last year, we actually did an inflationary change to the overall schedule. So that's a cola. We did not apply a cola to the chart this year. But we do have the capacity because we modified that and updated that chart last year. We felt like we, in reviewing wages, we did kind of an internal wage assessment. And the modifications that we made and the increases that we made to the chart overall, we felt that our staff, we were able to be a little bit more competitive while also staying within our budget parameters. And it does give staff the ability to move across based upon performance. And we pretty much budget each year for staff to at least get a 3% increase.
What is the difference between the, you know, where it has, it has the levels and then the longevity pay underneath? What's the difference there?
Yeah, so the city in the past adopted a longevity pay scale. And it was basically an opportunity to incentivize and reward employees who had met certain employment thresholds. So at some point in your employment capacity, you start to cap out on things like sick time and vacation. So this was a way to recognize that we had employees who had worked for the city for, say, 15 to 20 plus years. They were capping out certain portions of those benefits. So the longevity pay was a recognition of their time and kind of a bump in that pay scale. So currently, we have one employee, Vicki, who's been a long-term employee of the city, who is on the longevity pays level.
Thank you.
Am I the only one with questions?
No, I just asked a question.
Well, I don't want to take up more than my turn. I can just keep going.
What, what page are you on next?
So what are these questions, well, some of these questions are kind of a process question. So this budget, the recommended action tonight is to adopt this budget. Understanding that certain things are not resolved, like the law enforcement issue, how is that, how is that handled? I mean, if we don't change, if we don't budget tonight for law enforcement, for the new contract cost, what other options do we have?
Well, I would recommend that you adopt the budget and that we would bring back an amendment based upon any negotiations. So if there was any changes, we would need to bring that back to the council for consideration. But I would recommend that you adopt the budget because we do have operating expenses currently. I mean, the contract isn't going away, the services aren't going away. We have money in our budget to pay for our current contract levels. And we do have, we will need to look at creative solutions to make up any difference or any increased costs. But right now, we're in the process of determining what those actual costs might actually look like.
So as a hypothetical, there's money in this budget allotted for various purposes. If we, if we adopt it as is, but then later we go back and say, oh, we thought we were going to have enough money for the law enforcement over here, but we don't. So we're kind of scrambling now to find it somewhere else. But now we, but we've already committed those funds to, to these other areas. So doesn't it make sense to go through the budget and figure out if we can pare down in certain areas to, to make funds available for law enforcement?
I mean, a budget is just a, a plan. It can be fluid. And when there are items that come up, usually it happens when our taxes come in or something like that, it changes things. We, we have a budget amendment in front of us. I don't know, since you've been on the council, that there have been any...
We've already proven that we've done budget amendment for our clerk slash assistant, which we made a budget amendment for that to boost pay in accordance to their job title.
Right, and we're going up in spending. All the budget amendments I've seen have gone up in spending. But once those, once our funds are committed to a certain, to a certain fund or purpose, I don't see that we have any ability to, to bring those funds back into, into the general fund or, or to allocate those to some other need. So that's my question. I mean, when we, when we adopt a budget, we're committing ourselves to spending the money in, in, in the way as, that's outlined. But say if the council wanted to problem solve and say, well, we've committed a hundred thousand dollars to purpose X, but we really need 50,000 of that money to come back and go towards purpose Y, you know?
So I think what happens is, is when there's a change, you know, you're going to have to figure out, you know, where that funding is going to come from. So you may increase law enforcement, for example, but then you may have to decrease somewhere else to balance it out.
Right. But if, if we wait, if we wait till those funds are already spent, there's nothing to decrease. We can't, we can't take the money back that we already spent. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I think, I think the negotiation for the sheriff's contract is something that's going to come about soon. I think it's one of the big question areas.
Your funds are not spent with a budget. Your funds is, are allocated.
Allocated, yeah.
Is a better word. You know, the money's not gone. That's a, this is a plan for where the money is going to be spent in the next fiscal year. July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. This is your plan.
Right, and every month we pay bills and all those, all those funds are depleted as we pay those bills.
Not all of them, but...
But also, like she's saying, we have six, well, not six months, well, yeah, six months until we are allowed to even use this money that we're voting on right now. January?
No.
No, well, you're starting this week. It's June, July 1st.
You said January, so I was like...
Did I say January? I'm sorry. I meant July. Okay, July 1st to, to June 30th. But the money doesn't, isn't out, it doesn't get spent on July 1st, you know? It gets there incrementally, yeah, okay. And the other thing that happens, you know, like one year, we had a tremendous surprise because some property had sold in town. And as you all know, property values are very high in Blue Lake. And when it was resold, we got a lot more property taxes that year. So, you know, things can happen. You just don't know.
Yeah, and I would, you know, it's, it's important for us to have an operating budget. We have worked really hard every year to make sure that we meet our thresholds. You know, you could do a continuing resolution, but it's something that, you know, that I wouldn't recommend. I think you need to give staff some time to try and solve this issue. There's a lot of conversations taking place. I think there are some creative solutions that are, that are on the table. I, I think we're going to be able to resolve the issue and come up with a solution that works for Blue Lake. And, and you're right, Mayor Jones, it's, you know, not, the money isn't all spent, you know, July 1st. You know, we, we manage our resources, we manage these resources every day. You know, things, things ebb and flow, revenues can be up, revenues can be down. But it's our job to make sure that we're managing those resources responsibly for the city. And I think we've, we've proven through each budget cycle where we've been able to present a balanced budget and a budget surplus almost every budget year. But, you know, that we do take this seriously. I just need some time to deal with this sheriff contract issue. And like I said, there's a lot of conversation taking place. This was presented to us, this budget increase, or contract increase was presented to us just weeks ago. And so we're looking at solutions.
And just to assure residents that we do have a continuity of services. It's not going away, so we are still covered. So please don't spread any rumors around because that's all there are, are rumors. Okay, um, oh, go ahead. Did you have more questions?
I do. On, on page 29.
Yeah.
The American Rescue Plan Fund. I see, I see the remaining balance there of 99,837 dollars as being allocated to several different purposes. So the small business grants, I'm wondering if, are those going to be, is there going to be community outreach to all of our local businesses and everybody gets an opportunity to apply to those grants?
Absolutely, that's what we did the last time.
Okay. And then as far as the capital outlay, 79,837. Can you tell us what that is planned for?
So we're proposing to do several additional upgrades to Crash Hall. We need some additional funds to do the roof on Crash Hall. We have the commercial kitchen that's going in. We're also going to be installing a new sound system, new lighting, some sound paneling. Basically, what we're doing, we're making a huge investment into Crash Hall because we think that, and what we've seen this last year is we've been able to generate a substantial amount of revenue by multitasking the space. In years past, you know, it's been used as a skating rink and maybe some drop-in activities, but a large part of the time, Crash Hall sits idle. And we need to be able to, to find revenue streams. And we, you know, we've really homed in on recreation. We'd love to be able to do more sporting events. We, our skating program has just completely blossomed. We're having, you know, we've hosted a school dance. We've hosted some music events that we'd like to do more of those. Movie nights, additional recreation tournaments. So we think Crash Hall has a lot of capacity to drive revenue for the community. And we're really proud of Crash Hall. It's an asset to this community that was, you know, built by volunteers. A lot of us have grown up in Crash Hall. And it's just, making this investment into the infrastructure just prolongs its life and the capacity for the city to, you know, bring in revenue to support the rest of the park facilities. So the COVID dollars can be used for upgrades, maintenance, repairs, to help facilities that were shut down during COVID and maybe experience some neglect because, you know, staffing levels were down, things were shut down. So this is kind of one of those opportunities, you don't get these opportunities very often, to have a revenue stream, a cash opportunity to make this investment. So we're recommending that we invest the funds in Crash Hall.
I, I thought that there were others, park funds that were, were going to the, the Crash Hall renovations.
We have a state park per capita program. That was also a grant that we received from the state of California. And that's been going, we've been doing substantial investment into our park facilities. So we've made investments into the horse arena, the tennis courts, Crash Hall, Little League Field, Clements Field. And we're, we've made improvements to the serving booth, the stage. So that was a grant we received. And it's also been a huge benefit to the community and to our facilities. Because like I said, these are revenues that we normally wouldn't have. And so to be able to have this money to make those long-term infrastructure improvements has just been a huge benefit. So this is, we're kind of, you know, we're coming to the end of it, but we have had this little bit of a windfall to really help with our recreation investment.
So Fund 13. So we have 147,000 dollars in that fund, it looks like.
We're on page 30.
On page 29. Still. Still.
Oh.
So is, so is that also going to Crash Hall or that's going to other things? Or we're maintaining that balance, we're not spending that down, it looks like?
Yeah, that, that, those funds are going to be fully spent out.
Are they?
At the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So those funds came in, in advance and have been spent out partially in 2020, 22, 23, and the remainder will be spent out in 23, 24.
Oh, I see, okay.
And, yeah.
That's another thing that happens sometimes with our budget. And our money is, it, it's in the middle of receiving the funds and then, and, but yet we have a summer recreation program that's in place and so there's a little crossover there in the middle of the year.
Okay, and then there was- There was an increase proposed in, for a new, a new position for the front office. And I'd like to learn more about that.
Yeah, so we, in this budget cycle, we're proposing the addition of a half-time position to the front office. We're at a point, I would say we're probably at a breaking point with our staffing levels and the amount of work we have and the amount of projects, that I think if we don't bring on another position, we might, people might leave. So what we're proposing is a part-time position. They would work part-time from probably around, come in around noon or so and work into the evening so that they can be an extra support person. I have two part-time people in the mornings and then in the afternoon, if one, we have two full-time employees. If one of those full-time employees is on vacation or sick, we have one person basically operating City Hall and myself. And it, it's, for a small city, it's busy. I mean, it is, there are times where, I mean, we are, you know, just barely, barely getting by, trying to answer phones, people in the front. And then on top of that, all the duties that they have as front administrative staff. So they do all the billing, payments, answering public questions, payroll, financial management, transactions, you know, all of it. So we're just, the city's workload has increased and I think it's directly reflective also of the amount of grants that we've been bringing in and projects that are coming through and just kind of the upswing and vibrancy in the community. So our recreation programs alone take up hours during the week just doing insurance, special events, answering calls, taking payments. So we are really at a point where we need an ex, we probably, we need a full-time position, but we can only afford a half-time. And I think it will be, it'll be helpful to have that position. Half-time is better than nothing.
Is their duties just going to be like floaters, just helping people out?
We're going to have, we're having a staff meeting this week to kind of talk about duties and segregation and, you know, as new projects are coming on and new duties, like what's the best way to manage those? So we're kind of in a position right now where we're looking at maybe changing duties, changing the flow of work, changing some of even the, the space, just so. We need to also implement some new technology. Honestly, we're, we're very like 1980s in that office. I mean, our desks are from the 1950s and our systems are like the 1980s. So, you know, we, we make hard copies of everything. We've got filing cabinets full of documentation. We need to start moving into, you know, the 2000s at least. And start, you know, using, utilizing different management systems, getting opportunities for the customers to pay online, you know, email out billing statements.
Close your MySpace account?
Yeah. I think they can still have to pay a little, you know, so, yeah. So modernizing the office will, will go a long ways, but, you know, you can't do all those things without, you know, also putting an extra burden on people.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, so we need to pass a resolution?
Oh, you have one?
No.
Okay. We need to pass resolution to get our budget going.
Oh, public.
Open to the public. The chair recognizes Lisa Hoover.
My name is Lisa Hoover and I'm commenting on agenda item number 12. If a funding source is not specified or earmarked for a specific expenditure but discretionary, is there a process in place that includes criteria established to guide prioritization and associated concurrence of such expenditures by the council? For example, if essential services for the community, such as law enforcement, which has been brought up a lot tonight, is not adequately funded, or cost of living increases are needed for staff, or we need funding for a city clerk position that was brought up by a council member years ago and it continues to remain vacant, and they have essential, back to the thing of like spreading people really thin, that's a critical role. And I know there's a lot of, you know, balancing of who does that work right now, and I'd like to see a city clerk in place. So that and the city employee-related items should be prioritized. So back to my question, is there a process in place for prioritization and who currently makes those decisions? And one example specifically from this budget that was developed has to do with the Powers Creek budget. In the 2024 budget, on page 18, it has, it has $385,000 in there. And I'd like to know, question number three, what is the source of this funding? Because if you go to page 25, it only displays $8,890 for law enforcement. So while capital outlay for projects like the one that I was mentioning for the town square, and I'm sorry, that was related to the general fund and Powers Creek fund, there was $385,000 set aside for capital outlay. While this is, has merit and is supported, that should not be at the expense of essential services for this community. Thus my question, and my questions about the process for determining how non-earmarked funds, discretionary funds are used, given the essential services that need to be covered by the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Chair recognizes Lynn Glenn. Oh, thank you. Chair recognizes Becky Thornton.
I just have a question on the $79,000 here, you're talking about Crash, Crash Hall commercial improvement on the kitchen and everything. I, I have a suggestion, and maybe you want to think about this because it's been relayed to me several times. You need new skates and you also need bleachers for your baseball fields. So that might be needed instead of other things. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Becky. Chair recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
My understanding is that we get, we've budgeted from our general fund, $8,889, $8,889, huh? But that actually, we have a fund that comes in that we get from outside sources of about You're only budgeting $146,000 of that for some reason. So as far as I can tell, with the current budget, unless there's some magical thing that doesn't show up in there, you, you have currently adding up those two numbers, $157,000 and $8,000. So you have a contract that's been brought to you by the sheriff and you don't have to pay him all the money, if I remember the contract. That's a quarterly thing, you get three months to pay it. You just have to sign the agreement so you're willing to pay it. And I have no indication from my multiple communications with multiple people in the sheriff's department, if there's, there's any leeway in that, that's just what it is. It's always been that way and not a negotiating thing. So I highly recommend, you have, you have plenty, you have plenty of money. You have a, a general fund, and I think, if I recall right, your general fund balance is projected to be $716,000, which I think came up to be 71% of your thing. And that's a heck of a lot. I think the county's at 6% or something, so it's great, I'm glad you have the money. You also have money in the, in the budget with a positive balance of $96,000. So that money is available also, and that's not put into anything that's going, was going into your general fund balance. So I want the public to be aware that there is the money out there to do this, we're just asking that you do it. And we don't want to have any chance of any voids, we don't want to have any miscommunications. We, we, I've done my due diligence on this one and there doesn't appear to be room for negotiating, they're not going to cut it in half. They're going to have the same contract that they gave to Trinidad and this is it. So I just highly recommend we get it done, we sign the contract, and then we can get on with everybody feeling that we're totally safe here and there's no chance of anything happening as far as a misunderstanding or a optimistic thing that all of a sudden the sheriff's going to say, well, I made a big mistake and you, you don't always have that amount of money for the service we're going to provide or find your service somewhere else. You can't get it anywhere else. I mean, basically, these services that they provide, if we have an outside firm, they're not able to arrest people. They're basically a good, good source for some of the things we need done, but, but they don't, they don't have the investigative techniques, they don't have the ability to do the things you would have to do. And so it's just plain and simple, that contract needs to be signed, that's good or done, and not have any chance that people feel like we're, we're lacking our law enforcement. To be honest with you, that's the most important thing on the whole budget. There's nothing else there, and everybody feeling safe to be in their own home, I think they may take being safe over sewer and water even. Thank you, my opportunity speaker.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other comments, back to council for-
Hi, Jeff, this is the county, I don't know your name. Did you say that the overall budget is 1.1 million roughly?
The general fund?
Yeah, there's a general fund and then there's a grant.
Yeah, the general fund budget is about, it's about a million.
About a million? And was that, what was included roughly in that? That's not some of these, there's two budgets, there's grants, and then there's a general fund?
The general fund encompasses everything that's not a special revenue fund, like a gas tax fund. And it does not encompass water and sewer. So it encompasses all the other essential services of the city.
Did I hear correctly that the Powers Creek was $600,000 within the general fund, roughly?
Are we doing a committee review? Not really.
What? Was this word budget-related, isn't it?
Well, it is budget-related, but your comments should be a presentation to the council and then you sit down. That's just protocol, Jeff.
I can't ask a question?
You don't like it, but it's, it's protocol.
Okay, then I would request that there would be a source where I can get the budget items in and out, how those are tracked. That's the, that's the request then. You know? We don't need to do this. I'm asking a very fair question, I came across this, I just want to get some information. Nothing personal, it's just procedure.
Well, no, it's-
Okay.
Do you have another here? I think, is that Julie? I think Julie's got her handed.
Oh, yes. Chair recognizes Julie.
Hey guys, thank you for listening, I'm very little, I'm just sitting down. I just want to, thank you for presenting all of our budget, that's a lot of material to go through. I'm not quite sure how it really went at last council special meeting, with breaking it down a little bit better, so I apologize if my commentary is, it could have been answered then, I apologize for that. But I just would like to maybe see if it's possible that when we get this grant funding, if there's a way that we can, like Mandy was saying, you know, it's really restricted, all right? It's supposed to be, and in some circumstances it is legal. But in certain instances, sometimes like with COVID funding, there is some leftover allocation, just to keep up the community within our budgets, maybe within more mainstream of the year, with some reviews that show us these are the grants we have, this is how the money's being allocated now, and this is what we have remaining from these grants. Because they're going to the city, they're going to the community, and I think just any kind of way that we can be aware of those, we can be, you know, influential with new ideas or supporting them, I think would be really beneficial. We could just incorporate that kind of philosophy or ability into our coming years. I think that would be cool. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I believe we do usually have a mid-year budget assessment and we go through how much has been spent and how much is left. So that occurs already. All right, it looks like back to council for the, Lynn Glenn, have you spoken on this item? No, okay, go ahead.
Yes, you did.
I have a great-
Oh, you just yelled from the edge. Because I wrote your name down.
I just would think so. So it was Jeff told that he, that the public is not allowed to ask questions?
You can ask a question, but it's, we don't have to answer, it's just-
It's not a discussion.
It's not a discussion, this is your opportunity to make comments or questions, but it's not going to be answered, it's just part of the procedure.
Public can ask questions because they don't have to be answered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, back to council for possible action.
I hope that we adopt a resolution number 1222.
Second. Motion made by Alyssa McKay, seconded by Angela Scholl, to pass a resolution number 1222, our budget for fiscal year 2324. Is there any further discussion from council?
I would just like to state that I'm not comfortable passing the budget at this time, simply because of the outstanding law enforcement issue. I feel it would be reasonable to continue this matter to another special meeting. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All's in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
It passes four to one. Item 13, Planning Commission Zoom Option Discussion. The Planning Commission and the city council have received requests to provide a Zoom option for public participation at planning commission meetings. City commissions currently do not offer a Zoom option due to technical capacity. If the council chooses to implement a Zoom option for the planning commission meetings, staff can be directed to do so. And was this generated by the commissioners?
Uh, council members.
Oh, oh, okay, did you-
Actually Kent Sawatsky requested that, as well as planner, planning commissioner, Bob Chapman. He brought that to Mandy after the last planning commission meeting. So we have, and we have quite a lot of community support for doing this at the, at recent planning commission meetings, it's been requested by numerous speakers from the community. So I think there's, there's great, there's quite a lot of community ask on this item. And as the planning commission is doing very important work with each of their meetings, I think it is appropriate that we offer a Zoom option for these meetings.
I'm wondering if we offer a Zoom for the planning commission, then do we also, would we be offering Zoom for all of the commissions? Or would we only be singling out this planning commission? What would our policy be?
Well, in my opinion, the planning commission is doing work that is far more impactful than the other commissions. And so in my opinion, the planning commission would be our next step. I don't feel like we need to offer Zoom for every commission meeting, but that the planning commission stands, stands above the other commissions, essentially.
Did staff want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I, I think the planning commission makes more sense to offer the Zoom option just because we do have more technical capacity. So the planning commission is really the only commission we have that has dedicated paid staff associated with it. So Gary Reese is our planner and he is paid to come and help facilitate those, those meetings. And then I'm also required to attend those meetings. The other commissions don't necessarily have that same level of staff capacity, so a lot of times they're running their own meetings, you know, they don't necessarily have access to like the technical stuff or coming to set up meetings ahead of time. But the planning commission does have that capacity, so I think that would be an easy one to implement.
So Gary would be able to handle that?
Yeah, Gary and myself always attend the meetings, so it's easier for us to just be able- So it's easier for us to just be able to set up the room.
Okay.
But the other commissions, we don't necessarily attend always.
And are they being recorded as well, the Planning Commission meetings, as I understand?
Um, yeah, actually, Justin's been coming basically.
Okay. Well, it doesn't seem to be an issue then. We should go ahead and do it. Do we need this by motion or just direct staff?
I think it's just a direction.
Okay. Anyone have any problem with directing staff to have Zoom meetings go? All right. So directed.
Mary Water, do you want public comment on that?
Oh, okay, let's have some public comment. Why not? The chair recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
Well, Angela is standing there, is that okay?
I'll just be a second. I just wanted to say thank you so much for offering Zoom for, for the Planning Commission. I know that the other commissions are not as important, but I would like to attend them, and I don't always want to be gone every night from my home. So if, at all possible, if you could please consider zooming some of the other commission meetings. I know that City Manager said that she doesn't attend a lot of the other commissions, but she actually does. I've seen her at most commission meetings. So, or maybe if Justin could be there somehow, I would just like you to consider it. Because I do like to attend the meetings so I find out what's happening all over, not just the planning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chair recognizes Mr. Sawatsky.
I would like to thank staff for fulfilling a portion of their obligation to agendaize certain topics. I also think that unless Blue Lake is a real unique place, it would be proper for, for the staff to inform you folks as far as your ability. If I may be incorrect, but it should be researched. You have people legally who do it. But my impression is in the county, the supervisors, which would be your equivalent, have the ability twice during the year to go ahead and Zoom, Zoom the meetings. And that's something that if you're lacking a quorum or something like that, you know, or you're away and you're still able to attend, it's a very good tool in your tool belt. You mentioned earlier about bringing things up to speed back out of the, out of the, you know, dark ages there. Well, this is one of the tools that I think you'll find very, very good for you folks, also for the Planning Commission. Regarding the other commissions, of course, any of them that actually meet in this facility would probably be zoomable. I know, I think one of them doesn't meet in this facility. They would have to move over here. But let's just, let's at least try it this way, and if you find it's doable, that would be great to go ahead and move forward on that. And I guess a little later in the meeting, I will ask to have something agendaized. It wasn't, and it should have been agendaized for this meeting. Then my opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Chair recognizes Becky Thornton, and then Julie. You want Julie first? Okay, Julie, go ahead.
Julie? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry. I really appreciate this being on the agenda. I've commented a few times about commission meetings just in regards to the realistic restraints that obviously we are already able to house Zoom via Skinner Store, via our, you know, Mandy being there. And that's great. We ever have that offered to the D, please? That's awesome. We appreciate it. However, we have been blessed by the grace of having an individual in the community volunteering their time. He's there right now, and it's been very much. I don't know if there is a possibility to perhaps provide a part-time position for him, but I think it would be well worth looking into supporting community members that's already giving their time, that could facilitate these things for us. I don't know why we're not even talking about joining them together. It's not trying to throw somebody under the bus, but it's just a thought, and I think it's something that we should prioritize monopolizing on if it's an opportunity. So, other than that, I know we've got the money, I know we've got the know-how. Let's just get her done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chair recognizes Becky Thornton.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for putting that out and offering the Zoom. And it is very helpful for everybody, and I would like to see more of the commissions too, as long as they're in here. I think it would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? All right, let's move back to council. Then direction is to staff to begin zooming our Planning Commission meetings. Man, what a, what a difference COVID made. I didn't even know what zooming was five years ago. All right, so we're going to do that, and we'll look into other commissions, but we'll, we'll do this first and move onward.
It's coming soon. It really is, because all this reasonable accessibility stuff for employees, employers, it's going to be required for everybody to have it available all the time at some point.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're going to be able to Zoom their water bill here soon.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on then after directing staff on item 13 to 14. Did anyone need to pull anything from the consent agenda? Which is basically our warrants.
Yeah. I'm just kind of curious about something.
All right, if you want to pull it.
If it's all by itself, though, right?
You have to pull it if we talk about it, so.
Never mind.
You can ask Mandy about it. She'll tell you what it is, I'm sure. All right, so we need a motion to pass the consent agenda. So moved. Second. Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Scholl to pass the consent agenda. Any further discussion from council? Anything from our dwindling audience? Mr. Sawatsky?
Technically, it's a conflict of interest for you to have the warrants approved to give yourself your pay. You're benefiting from that, just thought I'd point that out. But I'm not going to have a problem with you doing that, because that's the only procedure you have.
Well, just to let you know, I, I do turn my check over to the city every month, so I do not take the $50 allotment. And it's for our haircuts, apparently. That's what they said years ago. It was for haircuts.
Were we supposed to look good for this?
In the 40s, in the 40s. That's what it was for. They were all men, they were never women.
Oh, that's hilarious.
And it was for haircuts. Whatever it took, that's what it was for. But that's a little Blue Lake history there for you. All right, motion has been made, seconded, and the consent agenda is now for vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Council correspondents? Did we get this letter from, did we get this letter from Bobby Rica?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So our one correspondent was from Bobby Rica. Dear City Council, I served on the Blue Lake City Council from 1983 to 1995. I was mayor when the industrial park was created and the original ultra-power lease negotiated. I know how important the power plant income has been to the city over the ensuing years. I was once again elected to the City Council in 2016. During that term, the council voted not to further extend the power plant lease. We also created the Opportunity Zone and began to envision a live-work development in the renamed Powers Creek District. We saw this as an opportunity to finally fulfill our state-mandated low-income housing requirements as well as provide acts, provide spaces for commercial growth. Our economic development research taught us that providing food is a necessary early step in successful development. We saw Blue Lake's existing artisanal food and drink businesses as a foundation to build upon, providing additional amenities while preserving Blue Lake's old-fashioned, small-town, no-chain-store, no-exterior-neon-sign character. COVID delayed this process, but the concept remains sound. My husband Alex noted that the audience at the June 12 public meeting was mostly older people. He commented that we have fewer young people in Blue Lake than we recall from earlier in our 40-plus years of living here, in part because the cost of a home is unaffordable for many younger people. As a community, we have a moral responsibility toward the younger and the less well-financed members of our broader community. I urge you to support this project. It is a good next step into Blue Lake's future. Change is inevitable. We cannot halt change, but when we act with common purpose, we can shape change to serve and enhance our special community. Sincerely, Bobby Rica.
Very well written.
Very well written, indeed.
Okay. Any other council correspondents?
Nope.
No? Okay, we'll move on to reports of council and staff. Go around the dais here. Christopher, did you attend any meetings?
No, I, I did, well, I talked to them. They have nothing to report. The Blue Lake Fire Department has nothing to report. And then the other commission I'm part of is the Rancheria, and they never. They said all my thing is as needed, and nobody's got a hold of me yet. So unless you want me to go wrestle them down and talk to them.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah, I, actually, I did saw Jason at Lou's or Louise's.
Yeah.
Last night.
Excellent.
Okay, you had your meeting then. All right, moving around the dais. Elise, did you attend a meeting?
I did. I attended a meeting for Redwood Coast Energy Authority. It was the first meeting where Jason Ramis was an official voting member of the board there as the Rancheria is a new member entity. We had a presentation from one of the staff members, our very own Steven, who lives here in town, Coleman.
Yeah. Former council member.
Right. And so Redwood Coast Energy Authority has been awarded administration of a, I'm not going to get the name wrong. I'm not even going to try to get the name right about that. A big, a big program with many, many millions of dollars every year. So for rural, for rural services. And I can't describe it adequately, so I'm going to stop there. But, but that's a pretty exciting opportunity for, for RCEA to be administering that program. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I reported on the meetings I attended. HCOG was canceled. I attended the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. The only other thing I might announce is that the citywide yard sale has been set for Saturday, August 19th. We're working with the Upcycle Boutique thrift store on the corner for the signup, but it will not occur until after Annie and Mary Day. So around July 10th or 11th, the signup sheet will be there. $5, again, to be on the map, and most of that money does go to charity. So August 19th, Saturday.
August, I thought you said July.
August. Did I say July?
I heard, I heard July. Sorry, I heard July.
Yeah, because that's the day, day after I get back from vacation. I was like, how am I going to rank?
I'm not thinking.
The city hall has been getting phone calls off the hook, and so we just stabbed on a date. Yes, it's the same day as the Buddy Brown Blues Festival.
Oh, perfect.
But, hey.
People will be here. People will walk in.
You get, you get sick of the blues, you can go buy some yard waste, yard stuff. Okay, so August 19th.
Boozed-up shoppers going around.
That's all I have. Angela.
I went to redeck last night, and there was a pretty intense, not, it was intense, actually, report from Nick Bound Crawford, who is the executive director of Humboldt Maid.
Oh, yeah.
But he is also the chair for the Eel River Long, the Eel River Valley Long-Term Recovery Group. And in essence, what he discussed was the efforts of economic recovery and how it, and how it's inherently married to disaster relief. And so the example he gave was the work that they are doing in Rio Del to mitigate the earthquake damages, and he had a lot of really, really good graphs and information, but, you know, and kind of gave a little bit of, he also gave some really good information about the purpose of FEMA and the purpose of government assistance during a relief, but not, or during, during an event, a catastrophic event, but not in the, not in the recovery effort. So the government. So it was just this really kind of nice perspective on, on how the government is there to support during a disaster, but then they walk away, and so where, you know, so then what does that leave for the community as they're, you know, doing their, their economic recovery? So it was a really intense. And Amanda Carter, who is the mayor pro temp for Rio Del, was sitting next to me, and she just was nodding the whole time, and she was like, I, I have PTSD even after, you know, like six months of this. It's just been very, very intense for the folks of Rio Del. One recommendation, of course, is to go and support Rio Del businesses if at all possible. If you find yourself in the Eel River Valley, they have a lovely waffle house. It's been noted by the San Francisco Chronicle, it's one of the best waffle houses in California. Just making a plug for Rio Del. They need our support. Additionally, we reviewed the loan portfolio for redeck and really, really solid numbers. They're anticipating 4.2 million in new loans this year. And, yeah, I think that was about it.
Yeah. Thank you.
I've known Nick since he was a little kid. Grew up with my son.
Mom was my teacher.
Yeah. I did my student, my student taught with her, yeah. He might have been in my class.
Nick's all grown up, oh my gosh.
So I did not, my one meeting was canceled between now and then from a week ago. And so I did not attend any meetings. Yeah, but I wanted to say something, I can't remember. What was the last thing you were just talking about these days?
I was talking about supporting Rio Del.
Oh, Rio Del, yeah. Being in the, in my new industry of housing, there's a lot of homes for sale right now in Rio Del.
Some of them without foundations even.
Yes, yes, they're.
I've actually talked to some people there about that, and it's, you're not going to be able to just buy an outright with a loan.
No, cash. We need cash. Yes, definitely need cash, but, yeah, they.
But a better opportunity is in school shop.
Yeah, I think so, too. Those houses are getting fixed up. Okay. Staff report?
So my time is basically taken up working on budgets. So I'll have a more comprehensive report for you guys at the next meeting. I'll have an updated project schedule as well.
Thank you. Future agenda items?
Is that what you just said? You'll have an update timeline?
So I have a, the monthly, the city planner, the city engineer and I meet, and we have a project list that we go through. And in the past, I've been able to provide that to council just as kind of a tracking mechanism, but also just to show you the number of projects that we have, what we're working on, and kind of their status. So we'll be updating that, and I'll be able to provide that just with my kind of normal staff report.
Yeah, my two concerns are the truck route program and the Powers Creek timeline. Just like some rough, some stuff.
Updates.
Yeah, and I believe the city engineer is getting ready to do some additional outreach on the designs for the truck route, because we're kind of starting to wrap up that process, and we want to take that back out and just make sure that we're, you know, on the right track, because we would like to go to construction. So we've been funded for construction.
Excellent.
After Annie Mary Day?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Construction. Okay. Any future agenda items? You know the timeline on that? Public comment? We don't usually, but I see a hand in the audience and a hand here. Chair recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
As I brought it to your attention, a copy of your, from your municipal code 2.04, which not deces, any member of the public may request an item be placed on the agenda regularly to schedule meetings in Blue Lake. It has a however there, and you guys can read that. But I am requesting, as I did before, and I think it's very important not to leave vacancies on such an important thing as a planning commission. You may have to have your legal staff do a little research on that to see if that takes a 30-day notice. That's why I wanted it to have on here. If it takes a 30-day notice, then you have to do the notice. In the next meeting, maybe you could have done it at that time. But you're down to, down to four people there, and one person was taking, I think, was blocking out for three months total, and you had a bunch of other people taking their vacations. So it's kind of imperative to really move on these things quickly if you want to have something done in a timely manner. If you don't have a quorum, they can't take any actions. And it, to me, you know, it really, just our number one priority is to keep those seats filled, the same as you keep your seats filled. A 4-0 commission is not a good thing. You can end up with ties two and two, which is a negative vote, and they're. And therefore, I think it would be something that I'm requesting again, to be put on the agenda and the research be done in the meantime, so there's plenty of time to have a determination. If you have to notice, if you don't, I wish to have it, uh, put on there, that you can put out fielders personally when you find out what it is, see if you can get some people to apply. If there's people that apply, then go ahead and point. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Just so you know, it's been noticed. It was noticed a couple of weeks ago, and so we're already taking applications, and it will be brought to you at your next meeting. As for the process.
Thank you.
Can you say where it was noticed?
Um, it's noticed all over. We have flyers up everywhere, and it's been posted on the website and on social media.
The flyer's up at the post office, right? Yeah, I saw it, I saw it this morning when I was there. Yeah, I saw it this morning when I was there.
And we already have, I think, at least one, or two applications.
Thank you.
Julie, uh, hand?
Yes, thank you very much. And, um, I would like to comment, usually you guys do ask for public comment on new agenda item. It's just fresh because everybody's had a long night. And I understand that, but I'm just saying. So again, the truck route, and it's appropriate because it was in our manager's report here with the fact that funding has been received and going to be used. You have a lot of businesses you guys are not going to be happy with if you sneak this by them. I've been trying to get you to do an update. I've been trying to get them involved with you. This is not my job to involve these businesses that you're trying to scrunch out of our town and make it more unsafe. We should be talking to these truckers. It's their jobs to keep us safe committing their business through town. So, please, get us an update, and please reach out to the business owners. I know because I have talked to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
I was at the post office the other day and looking at the bulletin board, and I noticed there's two matiact, um, notices from different timeframes with different information on them. So I'm curious, is there some requirement to have more than one? Or can we consolidate that just to one, so it's maybe not so confusing?
Um, they're supposed to be pulling down the outdated ones and replacing them, because every time we get someone who resigns from a commission, we have to re-advertise. And we have several openings, um, on commissions right now, so we just continue to update them as those resignations happen.
Okay. Yeah, under the glass, in the glass case, there were, there were two of them.
The one was the original that had also the meeting dates and the, um, meeting times of all sorts.
Okay, um, nothing more on item seventeen, item eighteen?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion!
Okay, I think Elizabeth made it, so you can second it. Motion to adjourn made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Christopher Edgar. Any further discussion from, um, audience? Back to council for the vote.